Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 21st meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kayla is the dog person for today.
Okay.
Oh, he's here to go.
Yes, he is. Okay, come here, guy. I need your picture of you. Whoa. Our featured pet this week, if you can keep him still, is a mixed male. He was found in Vermillion off of Roanoke Drive. He'll be available for adoption Saturday at 3 o'clock, so stop buying a new pet. He's cute, guy. Good picture.
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. I went through an interesting book last night, and I came up with five thoughts. So I'm gonna go with number one and give you one for each week ensuing. The first one says, "The best way to cheer yourself up is to cheer somebody else."
Very nice, Commissioner.
Thank you. Ma'am Clerk.
Today in our appointments at 9:45, Lorraine Soil and Water Conservation District, and at 10:00, Catholic Action Commission of Lorraine County. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
There are no advances or payments requisitions?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a matter of union negotiation that I'd like to talk with the Commissioners about in executive session, a permissible subject under the Sunshine Law. So I would ask that after our regular board meeting, we go into executive session for just a brief few minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, because we have the State of the City today for Lorraine.
I promise brief.
Okay. Your brief is not usually very brief.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just a little reminder.
Designate clerk on behalf of the board and clerk to acknowledge being designated a public records training in accordance with House Bill 9.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Prove and waive the reading of the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for February 7th and 14, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Instruct clerk to advertise for bids for paper products, trash liners, and cleaning products for county correctional facility, golden acres, and job and families. Notice being in the Chronicle on February 22nd and 29th, and bids to be open at 2:00 p.m. on March 7th in Fisher's Hearing Room.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under community development war contract to ABA, excuse me, ABS Heating Illyria in the amount of $4,990 on behalf of Sheila L. Fleming Sheffield Township in order to receive grant assistance for a furnace replacement from CDVG FYO7 Home Repair Activity, and this was the only quote received.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the engineers amendment Resolution 06326 adopted April 27, 2006, Resolution 07135 adopted February 22, 2007, issuing Highway Improvement Notes Series 2006 and 07. Said amendment is to clarify the purpose for which the bonds anticipated by the issuance of notes are to be issued.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Do you have any explanation on this?
Certainly.
Because I don't see Mr. Carney here.
Well, actually, it's just a refi, it's just, it's just a refinance of our bonds. We're in construction notes, so we do one-year notes. They periodically need to be refinanced, and costs came in a little less than anticipated before, so they need less financing. So it's, if I just said it's just a housekeeping thing until we go to bonds, that, because we'll stay in notes as long as the rates are very productive in notes. And, you know, the market is low right now, and financing is rather inexpensive. The, you know, the unfortunate part is that the bond market is such that we have a hard time with bonds right now, but construction notes are a lot better.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Provide for the issuance and sale notes of the county of Lorraine in aggregate principal amount now to exceed $700,000 anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying interest on and principal of and to retire the county's Highway Improvement Notes Series 2007 and paying the cost of issuance thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
I don't have any report this morning. Thank you. Will you want me to report on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioners, we, we worked on, I'm trying to see what number it was here, on number 12.
12.
One of the things we're doing, we're modifying our bid proposal package. I worked with Ms. Newton on this, to include language in the, in the proposal that allows any political subdivision within Lorraine County, and probably outside of Lorraine County, but I wasn't focused on that, to purchase under any of our bids. And we're gonna add language, and we have added language, into our bid. It says, "Lorraine County, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 9.48, will permit authorized counties or townships to participate in contracts in Lorraine County that Lorraine County has entered into for the purpose of certain supplies, service material, and equipment," and it goes on and on. So once we bid this, when we get a competitive price, if the townships, or, I think this would include the villages. I noticed municipalities isn't written in there. I think that, is that an oversight?
There shouldn't be any municipality and village written in that, pick about eight cities or so.
Before we go out with that package, it needs to say township, probably should just say political subdivisions within Lorraine County.
Yeah, it does, to Department Number Two upon the contract award, authorized counties, townships, and other political subdivisions.
It appears to be slightly in conflict with one, so we just need to make sure we clarify that. But, but the intent here, and it's just, that's a housekeeping on the language. The intent here is to allow other entities to use our bids without having to bid it themselves, thereby hopefully bringing some efficiencies to it. And then if we, we see how much use there is in that, then we may be able to ratchet down some of the pricing and get some better competitive pricing, because we're buying more. This was something that came out of the Community Alliance for some joint purchasing, and I had informed the Commissioners, and I work with Commissioner Blair on this, that we could help ourselves. We just, we just needed to get some cooperation. So we're opening the door to that cooperation. We're gonna make it available. Once we have the bids in, I was thinking through the Community Alliance, we should send out some notices of what's, what's available, and have the county taking lead and providing that leadership to the other communities if they want to join with us.
Thank you.
I know, I spoke with Mayor Kraschinko in Lorraine, and he's really excited about this whole thing, because now they don't have to submit for advertisements. It's gonna save them money right there alone, besides the fact that they'll be able to get it cheaper. So he's really excited about it.
Well, it's just another level of collaboration that we continue to, you know, walk up those stairs. And I'm hopeful, we did the reverse bidding, and we weren't very successful at that. So let's hope that we're successful at, at opening the door to more cooperation with some of those other entities. But we're gonna make a big push on this, and we'll report back in a couple, a couple months how we're making out. And Commissioner Blair, you know, I know you and Commissioner Kraschinko are on the Community Alliance, so if you guys could get the word out through there, that would be greatly appreciated.
We'll have Virginia coordinate with Yvonne, and we'd have the ability to email this information. David, you had a question?
Thank you, Commissioner. David Ashenhurst Overland. I hope that the list of political subdivisions that are eligible is as complete in its specificity as possible, so that if school districts, if the solid waste management district, if, if some of the things that aren't funded, or maybe the solid waste management district isn't a good version, but the other boards, the MRDD Board, all these other governmental entities that are subsidiary to the county but aren't, excuse me, under the Commissioners' control, and as I say, school districts or libraries, I mean, who are the eligible?
Most of the school districts already are doing some form of joint purchasing through associations and, and dealing with that issue. The, the, the language will be written in such a way that will, would allow them to participate. You know, I'm, I'm pretty much an incrementalist in this. I want to step forward, you know, gingerly and gain cooperation. But we could certainly offer it out to them. But at this time, I would like to see us join with some of the bigger municipal organizations. There's not a lot of purchasing going on in the smaller ones. But your thought on the school district is interesting, and Yvonne and I will, will take a look at that certainly. Appreciate the advice.
And as a piggyback to that, at the State of Illyria City address, I spoke to Bill Randall, the former JVS Superintendent. He is now in charge of purchasing for the consortium of schools. What do they call it?
I think it's called, yeah, Week, Week.
And he, thank you, he forwarded some information to me about purchasing as well. So we're, we're kind of working together to see what all we can do on that subject. Thank you for the thought, David. Okay, who's next, Theresa?
Well, if Mr. Cortez has done, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I, that concludes.
You know you didn't have anything, but just make sure.
That concludes the remarks that I didn't have to make this morning. Thank you.
I always like it when he doesn't have anything. And Jerry.
Commissioners, I need a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Cuyahoga County Prosecuting Attorney. There's no money involved in this. What has happened is, as a result of the Adam Walsh Act, and that's the changes in sexual offender registrations, all 88 county sheriffs, including ours, have been sued in federal court. Rather than have 88 counties go up to this litigation, since it is in Cuyahoga County, we've all agreed that we're gonna go ahead and let the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor make the presentation on behalf of all the counties, and we need an agreement to allow him to do that. It will be no at cost, at no cost, with this possible exception. They have sued for attorney fees, and should there be an award to the other side, we've all agreed to split that up in proportion to the number of, like, we have 300. So rather than us going up there for 300 separate lawsuits, they will handle it for us. But if for some reason there should be an award of attorney fees or costs to the other side, we would split it proportionally to the number of cases we have.
Thank you. Are there questions? Also move.
I'll second.
Any further? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Other than that, I have a few pending litigation matters that I just need to give you some update on that.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Commissioner Lori?
I have no report this morning.
Commissioner Ted?
No, no report. Busy everywhere, but no report.
I know. I just have one item I'd like to make known, if I can find it. Senator Voynovich's office has responded to a letter from the Lorraine County Community Alliance regarding the Highway Trust Fund. And the email said, "The Senator is concerned about this as well. He signed the attached letter urging the Senate leadership to fix this shortfall as part of the economic stimulus bill." Unfortunately, Congress did not act on it. It says, "As a member of the EPW Committee," and I'm not sure what committee that is, but it's one of his committees, "Senator Voynovich is going to take an active role with the authorization of Safety Lou. We would love to have your input on this bill as we start drafting it over the next two years." It says, "Please do not hesitate to contact me, who is Lori Huddinger, or Dora Prouse in our Cleveland office." And just for a little local floor on Dora Prouse, who is the contact that we've had for a number of years for Senator Voynovich, Illyria Catholic has a publication they call Panther Prowl, and they send it out to their local graduates. And I didn't know this until I got it, but apparently Dora Prouse is an E.C. grad. She works for Voynovich, and two of his other employees are also E.C. grads, and they were featured in the recent Panther Prowl, and I thought that was kind of neat. So I, I think that Voynovich has some good taste in who he hires to work in his offices. Of course, please remember, I'm an E.C. grad. That proves my report.
Our wonderful clerk just reminded me to remind everyone that our State of the County address is this Tuesday at noon at Spitzer Conference Center.
And you can come. You don't have to have a reservation, but it's nice if you want one, and you can get one at the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce upstairs on the 5th floor, right?
Right.
Okay.
Board of Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Do we want to do our presentation first, then do the public comment? Lorraine Soil and Water Conservation District, Nancy Funey, District Administrator, and Bob Turnus, Chairman.
Nancy, come on down. Nancy presented some paperwork to the Commissioners a couple weeks ago, and I gave that paperwork to our clerk and asked her to set up an appointment for Nancy and her board to come and speak to their dollar needs, because I think they're quite stark. Thank you.
Thank you for having me here. I presented a letter to the Commissioners two weeks ago concerning our budget, and we are in dire needs. We have not had, we've had a cut in our budget the past two years, in 2006, or I'm sorry, 2007, and now this year, 2008. What we are matched on through the county, we are matched through the state of Ohio. And last year, we were matched anywhere between 90 to 95 percent. This year, we're looking somewhere around in that 90 percent. It all depends on how the rest of the counties fare up through the state of Ohio. I am requesting that we have an additional $80,000 from the Lorraine County Commissioners added to our budget. The reason for this request, because of our short funding, if we do not get this request, I look for office closure at the end of May, and I would have to release all of my employees. There would only be enough money to carry over from the remaining balance that we have now to pay out the amount of sick time, comp time, and vacation time available. So that expense would only go to the end of May. We are matched by the state of Ohio through Ohio Federation of Soil and Water Conservation Districts and the General Assembly through the state of Ohio. Our match is presented on a percentage rate that is set per year. Our match fund comes to us in a partial payment in the middle of August, with the remainder of the payment sometime the end of November 1st, part of December. We will not have enough funds to carry us through that state match with what we have now through the county. Our, as I had stated, we will run out of monies as of the end of May. We will not have any monies to carry us over. We have been very generous with our, we have not over exceeded our expenditures. We have been very careful on, on what we spend with the county's monies. I just hope that you find it in your heart to present us with the money. I have presented you with a breakdown of our expenditures and what we, what we have spent in January and in February, with a outreach of what our expenditures would be for the rest of the year.
And this includes nothing for drainage?
This is nothing for drainage.
I see the drainage mans behind you.
In the past years, when the Commissioners had funded the drainage program, you allowed us to move $20,000 over into, into our special fund for administrative fees such as gas, paperwork, what have you. We have not done that. In 2007, the monies that were left in 2007, we had finished using for the ditch project, so we could pay out the contractors. There were, so we wouldn't have to come to the Commissioners and ask for extra money to pay them out properly.
Thank you, Nancy. And Bob Turnus is the president?
He is our chairman.
And he's behind you, and I'd just like to point out that this is a five-person board. Come on, Bob. And that these supervisors serve at no pay. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jerry, and James. And I'd also like to note that I am joined by two of my supervisors, John Forthover and David Manning, this morning.
Welcome, gentlemen.
One thing I did want to mention is that part of the reason our budget shortfall looks so, so large is the fact that the drainage program wasn't funded last year. When, when we received some of the drainage proceeds in past years in an effort to maximize the monies for Lorraine County, we actually submitted $20,000 of that fund for state matching. So by cutting that, that really was, had the net effect of a 30, about $38,000 shortfall to our district by not having just even the drainage fund. That goes without the regular cuts to our special fund, or what we call our, our operations budget. Does everybody have a clear understanding of how, how the state match really works? I, I know the other Commissioners may not have as intimate knowledge of that, and I'd be glad to explain it if you have any questions about it.
I would assume it's similar to all the other matches we do.
Yeah, except for that the General Assembly actually appropriates a fixed amount of dollars. And they can give us an estimate and say, "Well, it may be 85, it may be 90, it may look like 95." But if other counties around the state elect to raise their local appropriations, there's only a fixed amount of dollars to go around. So therefore, we may tell you, "We're expecting a 90 percent match, but it may end up at 85, it may end up at 80." So we're, it's, it's a little bit of a peculiar problem to try and budget from the supervisor's standpoint, because we're never exactly sure how much we may get from the state of Ohio. And that funding actually does come through the Ohio Soil and Water Conservation Commission, not, not the Federation. One thing that may be some reassurance to you, we are internally audited by the Department of Natural Resources, and we're also audited by the State Auditor's Office, and we've had two good audit reports. Any further questions you'd like me to answer? And I guess I would ask that you reconsider the drainage program. We have staffing available to work on that. We've expended all the funds that were available. We feel we have a good record of maximizing the dollars, putting them to work on the ground in Lorraine County.
Drainage program, in my opinion, was an excellent program, and you've done a lot of good, good work.
I, I might also add that last year, we, we recognized that you really had some financial challenges here. So when our budget requests came back with a cut, we, we really didn't come up here and plead for a restoration, because we felt like it was the responsible thing to do to expend the budget surplus we had, we had been able to accrue. And, but we've spent that down, it's pretty much gone, and it's time to step to the plate and really restore our budget, and that's our request today.
Thank you, Bob. Do the Commissioners have any questions about what the Soil and Water Conservation District does?
No, we, you and I went out with them and went from ditch to ditch, and I think you guys do a fantastic job.
Chair, might I say?
Sure. Jerry?
I would just mention, for the benefit of the Commissioners, we, as you may be aware, we are working on Phase Two of the Clean Water Act, which has to be implemented in April. Nancy has been of invaluable assistance in that. And we're working with a small group of people, trying to accomplish something that in other counties, they have, virtually have departments doing that. But we are gonna have some mandates with respect to that beginning in April. And as we've been putting it together, Nancy and soil and water people are gonna be an integral part of it. So I just wanted to mention, there are gonna be some mandated functions that we are looking for them to take on a role that is being handled by really entire departments in other counties.
That's a very good point, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Did you want to review this further?
Yeah. We'll hold it for next week if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have funds available to transfer?
Mr. Cortez?
To them?
That's what I want to ask this week, for our fund.
I, I don't have a copy of that fiscal sheet. How much are we talking about?
We're talking about $80,000. Was it $80,000?
Yes, that's our budget request.
Is that, is that the request for $80,000?
Yes.
Do you want me to work with Lysar and come back with some options for you next week? Can we take it up?
I would like, yeah, I would very much like to do that, especially with what Jerry just said. They have whole departments working on these new mandates. You know, how much does a department cost? Way more than $80,000. That's one person's salary probably for that. So whatever we can do to, to make this happen, I, I don't think we really have a choice in the matter.
We're $124,000 in this year with our budgeting. So we've gotta look at it, see where it comes from. Mr. Cortez, do you want to release and see where we can come up with it? It's a good program. I just want to make sure we're covering the dollars.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll have some, I'll have some scenarios ready for next week. Thanks for your attention this morning.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay, ma'am clerk, our next appointment?
Public comment. We got five minutes for tonight.
Yeah, we could do public comment.
Well, she's here. We need to sue both of these and then move on. She's hitting, she has a red jacket on. She's here.
I know, Sharon. It's at 10:00 a.m. That's all, Commissioner.
I have 10 o'clock on my watch. Sharon Kleppel, come on down. Thank you, Sharon. Sharon is with the Catholic Action Commission, and she'll tell you what her wishes today.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you so very much for the opportunity. The Catholic Action Commission thanks you, and I do too, for the opportunity to present to you our position on the regulation of payday lenders in our county and our state, and ask your support in passing a resolution that would support House Bill 333, commonly referred to as the Batch Helder Hagan Bill. And I've given you some material in terms of the background on payday lending. The Commission, along with several other county organizations, such as the Lorraine County Urban League and the Task Force for the Homeless, to name just a few, have endorsed the statewide coalition, the Ohio Coalition for Responsible Lending. Currently, this coalition is composed of advocates, religious leaders, community groups, and labor organizations, and has been endorsed by over 200 organizations statewide. The coalition was formed to research the best legislation nationally regulating payday lenders and to formulate a framework for a bill to be presented to the Ohio Legislature that would provide for fair and just lending practices by small lenders and make that a reality for all Ohio communities. As you know, payday lenders offer short-term, high-interest loans against future paychecks, or in the case of seniors, social security checks, at a usual rate of about $15 per every $100 borrowed. The Center for Responsible Lending, a national research group, has shown that just 1% of payday loans go to borrowers who repay their loan in full within the required two weeks. Instead, the average payday borrower is applying for nine payday loans per year, placing them in an endless debt trap and a cost of loans at the end of about 391% APR. As you know, payday lending as an industry was exempted from the Ohio Small Loan Act. The business model, as testimony by Mr. Michael Donovan, an ex-checks-and-go manager, before the Washington DC City Council affirmed recently, is based on flipping loans and repeat business. In the payday lending model, an individual who cannot repay their loan in full in two weeks must borrow the amount, along with another fee, from another payday lender to pay back the first lender. You can see how this type of borrowing can easily escalate and get out of control. I might add here that on a local level, the small coalition of county social service agencies and organizations have been meeting on this issue, and how best to meet the need of those who need small emergency loans and have very few resources. They have continuously stressed to me the devastating effects of payday lending on their clients' finances, and that indeed their clients have been drawn into a debt trap that they are not able to get out of. They have also stressed the need, however, for some alternatives to be developed that could provide access to small loan products. House Bill 333- House Bill 333, which I'm asking for your support, for which we are asking your support, does indeed provide that. It creates an incentive for financial institutions to make small loans. It does so by creating a linked deposit by the state. The state would make deposits as CDs earning up to three percent below market rates. So institutions that lend, to institutions that lend, the value of these deposits as loans of up to eight hundred dollars each at a rate of, at a interest rate of thirty-six percent capped. In addition, House Bill 333 changes the way a payday lender can do business. It establishes a rate cap for payday and small loan lending at thirty-six percent. It prohibits a check cashing business from making a loan to a borrower who has an outstanding loan with any check cashing licensee. It disallows origination fees for these, for these loans. It limits the fees to one collection charge per loan, and the definition of interest is amended to include fees, service charges, renewal charges, and any products sold in connection to the loan. It establishes a maximum number of loans per customer within one calendar year, and it creates a statewide database to verify a borrower's eligibility. It expands the responsibilities of the Consumer Finance Education Board to promote small loan counseling, and it requires internet lenders who make small loans within the state to be properly licensed. And it ends the use of postdated checks as security. In September of 2007, the Ohio Coalition for Responsible Lending released a study that indicated that payday lending is a 2.1 billion dollar business in Ohio. The total fees charged to Ohioans on these loans was over three hundred and eighteen million, money that flows out of our communities, as the majority of payday shops in the state of Ohio are operated by several very large, regionally and nationally-based operations, two of which are publicly traded. Lending should help build a future, not destroy it, with triple-digit interest rates and a downward spiral of debt. Our county hunger and emergency programs should not have to experience an increase in demand on an already overloaded system, as a result of people being exploited through payday loans. Ohioans should have access to short-term, small loans that charge reasonable interest rates, and allow for a borrower to make installment payments. However, it has been proven nationally that legislation that seeks to place a reasonable rate cap, such as House Bill 333, appears to be the cornerstone of really effective reform. To provide any less is an exploitation of our people and a detriment to our own community. And so I respectfully ask your approval of a resolution in support of House Bill 333 and the Ohio Coalition for Responsible Lending. And I ask that you send that resolution, if you so approve it, to our state legislators and to Governor Strickland. Thank you for your time, and I'd be most happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Sharon. Does, do the Commissioners have questions for Sharon?
No, I know State Rep Matt Lundey's been working on this.
Good.
So, we've talked about it, so, no, it's a good resolution.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further questions? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Thank you for coming Sharon.
Thank you so very, very much.
Theresa, did you have a packet? Do you have this?
The one she gave you today?
No. Would you press that button? Thank you. Okay. Are we at public comment then, ma'am clerk?
Yes, we are.
Anyone wishing to address the board? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Wow, she's tough today.
Well, I got chastised last week, and I do listen. Phone number two, so we can call you. Yes Shirley.
Shirley Johnson, Oberlin, Ohio. In relation to item number ten on the agenda, designating the clerk on behalf of the board and so on, to be the designee of public records training, all I want to know is, has any, has any training been planned yet? And if not, when it is, will you please keep us informed and let us know?
I've already attended our training on behalf of the county commissioners last year.
You've attended the training, but it says, I gather, this is you're supposed to, it does not mean that you're supposed to see that all the other employees are trained too?
We did have a training seminar, maybe Jerry could tell.
Couldn't, I couldn't.
We did have a training or seminar last year for county employees regards to...
Was that the one you had over at LCC, you mean?
That was for the elected officials training.
Yeah, well, then, then what, what did you have, and when and where, for the employees of the county?
Last August, was it?
Yeah, it was, it was last fall, before the implementation. We gathered representatives of all the departments here, and advised them of what their requirements were, and, and trained them in the new requirements. Actually, we've had a couple of meetings.
I see. Well, I think it would be interesting for us to know when you're, when, what you do and when you do it, so that we know.
Hopefully, you've seen the signs and the notices and the posters and everything around.
Aye, thank you.
Okay.
I must have missed it all.
I, I don't believe that, because I don't think you miss anything Shirley. David?
I'd like you to continue to think that.
Well, I'm going to.
Good morning again Commissioners, David Aschenhurst, Oberlin. I'm up here to make an unsolicited advertisement for poll workers. I have been working the polls in Lorraine County since November 2004. And I have spoken to Representatives of the Board of Elections this week about the number of poll workers they have and are still getting for the primary election upcoming. I remind everybody that we are called election judges, but you do have to be, raise your hand and say whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, because of the four judges in any precinct, two are Democrats, two are Republicans, and the, which of the four people sitting at that table when you come up is determined by state election law, sort of who's what in that line. So you're available, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, to serve as a poll worker. Throughout this quadrennium, since I started working the polls in Lorraine County, there have been changes in election procedures, and changes in the training protocols to implement those election procedures at every primary and general election over this time. It's a lot to keep up with. You can make yourself available for training and serving as a poll worker in this primary election by contacting the Board of Elections, which is easily found on the Internet and easily found in the phone book. I, I was about to give you a phone number, but I realize it's probably one of the two sides, and I don't want to do that. So call the Board of Elections at their phone book number and talk to them. I've worked some in Oberlin, but I've also worked throughout the county. I'm hoping that by November 2008, we may be able to cross county lines as poll workers, because some of the protocols in election law and procedure are statewide, and if Lorraine County produces more poll workers than it needs, it would be nice if we could help Cuyahoga County, which doesn't have enough poll workers, and never has, since I've been watching these things in the past. I also note that we've had rapidly growing turnout since 2000. In 2000, 2002 was not as much as 2000, but it was big for an off, you know, for a, the median, well, the off-year election, as they call it. 2004, of course, was huge. 2006 was huge for an off-year election. We expect a lot of interest in November 2008. The number of people that have already been trained, so that you don't have quite so many rookies, first-time poll workers in November, could possibly be of great benefit to us. We're already going to have lots of new ones. But some of the election problems we had in November 2004, and of course, they weren't nearly as bad in Lorraine County as in some other places in Ohio, but a lot of that could be avoided if some people were trained before October 2008. So I give everybody who wants to, and especially if you think you might also be able to work in November 2008, I urge you to make yourself available for training and for working the polls on this, on this upcoming primary election in Ohio. And I'm very glad that it didn't get moved up. Everybody said we were going to miss out, and Ohio wasn't going to have a role to play in the presidential nominating contest upcoming, and of course, here we are, and we do. Thank you.
We certainly do. And, and in, and in addition, if you want to avoid the rush at the polls, you can vote absentee. All you have to do is get a form. We have forms here in the Commissioners' office, there's some downstairs, and fill it out, get your ballot, and fill it out at home, and just drop it off at the Board of Elections, or you can go to the Board of Elections and vote there now. And you can avoid the rush on election day.
Don't say that on their website. They don't tell you about the vote there option. I'm calling them on that today.
Good luck getting through.
But we have the forms downstairs and at the Commissioners' front desk. Anyone else wish to address the board this morning? Thank you for coming. I move we adjourn into executive session for the purposes outlined.
I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ted Musby?
As most otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geogha and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston and the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area, and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the US Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County, and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake, and the south, the village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4th, 1817. The village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rawson in 1816. Ten years later, the Rawsons were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rawsonville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rawsonville was In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Alariah Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorain County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorain County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Alariah and the city, which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorain County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Alariah as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorain County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French General Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of 1817, moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorain County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in 1818 requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833 and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in 1992, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826, and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorain County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorain County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LaGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of 1825, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name LaGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French General Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LaGrange. By 1875, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LaGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners, and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorain County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.